Special meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Thursday, May 6, 2021. It's 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santanaz?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton? Mayor Coops?
Here. So I need a motion to excuse the absent Mr. Dutton.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so the motion by Councilmember Santanaz, supported by Councilman Victor Sanchez. Without objection, that will be the order. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3A, the public may address the City Council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on Page 2 of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated in the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab, if by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner, or if by telephone, plus the number 6 to raise your hand. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. Do we have any public comments this afternoon, Myra?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Item 4A, Mr. Stewart.
This is the second part of our budget study session that was began earlier this week, and it will be, I'll read it again, to study session or review budget proposals. So we see the Department for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2023. Individual department directors may present major budget changes and projects for City Council consideration. The Director of Finance also provide resident estimates and other items for the new fiscal year as council members may provide general input direction regarding the draft budget. And some of them will be held to consider adopting the final budget later off in the process. So today, we finished up, we made a lot of ground last, the last meeting. There's still, I believe, some question answers that the council may have, and I believe Tay has some more comments he wants to make as well. But I think today, we are going to continue the process of answering the questions that the Department, of the Department of Presentations at the last meeting. But I think I'd like to start by asking first, the Department has, if there's anything they want to add to their presentations at the last meetings, and then I'll turn it over to Tay for his comments before we get to the council comments.
Joel can go first, if you want.
Joel can go first.
Indeed, sir. I've got a few things that council members were asking for. Councilmember Santa Nez, you'd asked about full-time equivalents of our part-time staff. I think I did mention to you about 3.75 is what we estimate, about 155 hours a week is what they work collectively. And you'd asked about whether our mobile ALPR units on the patrol cars, license plate readers are enough. Did we think? We actually have four, and that is twice as many as the other cities, any of the other cities have. So we think it's a decent number. Traditional pricing is about, if we looked at something on a fixed post scenario, like on Lakewood Boulevard, Artesia, that kind of thing, we'd be looking at about $30,000 to put up on poles or some sort of apparatus. We would have about $30,000 to cover two lanes on a 24/7 read. But right now, I've got a colleague looking at some different technology that might do the same thing and be significantly less. So I'm looking forward to hearing from that person what they find out. And Councilmember Hamada, you'd asked about a little bit more Neighborhood Watch. So we have, about a year ago, when we looked into the Ring camera program, if we put in $10,000, the Ring company would supply 200 residents with the devices. They would basically, we would be covering half the cost. So $10,000 would give a 50% discount to 200 residents who wanted to pay the other half and have a ring installed. And we would tie it to Neighborhood Watch some way that, you know, hey, if you're interested, contact us, we'll talk about it. Maybe they become a member, a captain, something like that. We'd have to flesh that out. And then you'd asked about crossing guards, grants, paying for crossing guards. And I did send you an email. We did talk to all city management, our carrier. They have upwards of 7,000 guards on staff, and they work in 21 different states, which I didn't know they were quite that large, actually. And they just said they don't know of any client that does get a grant to pay for crossing guards. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, it just means it doesn't happen with the folks working under all city management. And Councilmember Sanchez, you'd asked about VOP participation, trying to stimulate that. And we had mentioned that if we wanted to entice Bellflowerians to join up with VOPs, we would offer to reimburse them for their uniforms, that's a possibility. And also maybe some money to advertise the program beyond the free stuff. The last ad came out, I believe, last week in the Bellflower Citizen, talking about joining the VOPs. We had some social media stuff prior to that. But a few dollars set aside might get the uniforms and the promotion. You know, maybe that's $15,000 a year or something along that line. And then you had some interest in better crime mapping that would show where crimes are occurring on a weekly basis. We, just a matter of a couple of minutes ago, I emailed you something I just received 10 minutes ago from Sheriff's Park, two different versions, more or less something you've seen before. But there is kind of a heat map version that may be of interest. I'll put these in the weekly, and you'll have them in your email whenever you, whenever you check. So that's all I had.
Mr. Grecki, Lynn, do you have any follow-up on?
Jeff, before you, can I ask questions to Joel?
Sure, please, yeah.
Okay, Joel, thank you so much for the additional information that provided us. Just a couple of questions, and I, I think there's something in the budget right now that will pay for the fixed speed radar. Am I correct?
We have some money. We typically, we typically set aside a little money that we don't always use, having to do with traffic enforcement or safety, because something may pop up where we, you know, want to have a kind of a last-minute opportunity without having to get a budget revision. So we wouldn't have enough.
There's something, and I cannot put my hands into it, but I think there's something about $40,000 that I read.
I believe you're right, Mr. Santanaz. I recall that as well.
Yeah, I just.
As a pilot two years ago, and I think that's in the budget somewhere.
Yeah, I know it's somewhere there, so.
So that was not under public safety, but under traffic calming or one of those other kinds of things? Is that what you're saying?
That could be it, but I read something to that effect.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, right?
Yeah, we'll dig that out.
Okay, so I guess depending on what your, what your contract's going to come up with, but because what I was suggesting, what I suggested two years ago was do a pilot. And I know that there's one area that I can, very interested is the one in Woodrop by your high school, and also on Rosecrans by the Kaiser. Because at night, those are basically kind of dead, and there's a tendency for drivers to speed in those areas. So I'd like to, if we can increase that budget line, I think if we can take a look at that, I think it's $40,000. And again, depending on how much your, your contract would come up with, I'd like to expand to maybe two or three pilot projects within the city. Okay, and then secondly, I got my notes here from last week. I was, I don't know if I was, I don't know if someone else asked the question about the major initiatives for these coming two years. Reduce the number of stolen cars to 420. So can you describe what are the strategies that you have in mind to reduce the number of stolen vehicles?
Well, it's largely meat and potatoes enforcement. We do have the license plate reading technology that we'll continue to use. We do work with the TRAP unit within the Sheriff's Department to help with operations. You know, SEOs might work at night in cooperation with TRAP and try to, try to find people in the car stealing business, you know, by watching stoners that have been identified, and we leave them there and then watch to see if anybody comes. You know, those kinds of things are pretty traditional. Lot of our goals, we try to just put like a reasonable amount of improvement or a reasonable amount of, or similar to what we've had the year before, just so that as, as we start getting away from that, then we realize, oh, we've got to do more, take away from something else and do more on that topic to keep that topic on track. So, yeah, like I say, nothing that's unique or necessarily new, unless we do add some more license plate reading technology, more, more opportunities there. But like, like I use the term a lot, meat and potatoes enforcement.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. And then finally, on the volunteers and patrol. And I just want to share this with you, at the last meeting, I shared with you that I spoke with the Odd Fellows, and when they asked me how they can help the city, the main response was basically two ways. One is be more active in Neighborhood Watch and then also volunteer in the Volunteers on Patrol. So I would suggest that part of your marketing is, if you can speak before the, before service clubs, we might have some interest from them to be above the Volunteers and Patrol. Okay, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Mr. Santanaz, how many members are in the Odd Fellow?
The one, when I spoke, I saw on the, on the Zoom meeting, there's about 12.
Okay.
That's pretty good.
Oh, that's about 11 more than I thought. I always see the one guy in the wheelchair, you know, so.
And what was really amazing is they really, they, they, I think they're very sincere. They want to help the city.
No, I appreciate that very much. Anybody else have any questions of Joel?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. Thank you. Joel, thank you for the update. And as we've been hearing the last year or so, you know, Bellflower's always first at something, so. So maybe the possibility, but yeah, I mean, obviously, keep looking and, and, or, or, you know, keep talking, because somebody's bound to, to have tried to take advantage of that, you know, and, and, you know, get some extra money, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, any comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Joel for getting back with us with the information. Thank you, Joel, for all your work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Joel, here's a consideration. You mentioned that we could partner with the, what's the name, the door pill people with the video.
Ring?
Yeah.
Ring?
Exactly. If we put $10,000 aside, we could get 200 units supported halfway. Does that sound right?
That was, yeah, roughly. That's a year ago. If we came up a little short, we could use some of our existing Neighborhood Watch money to cover it. But that was, that was the program then.
Do you think it would be advantageous that, again, I'm just trying to, try to rebuild our Neighborhood Watch captain base, go to 100 instead of 200 and give it to them as a gift, free of charge? Would that be more, to me, that would be more equitable. But again, free is always good, but I, but I think people would be reluctant to shell out half their money. But if it were not their responsibility, but they would agree to be part of the group and build that up again, what do you think?
Well, my only concern is this gift to public funds thing, and maybe that's not anywhere near an issue. If not, then, I mean, it's doable. Half off, 100% off is a doable concept. Yeah.
All right, well, let's hear what their city attorney says about that possibility. Carl, are you on?
I don't think he's on.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, okay.
The only issue is that the City Council would have to define what the public purpose was in terms of giving it. And in terms of a public purpose, my suggestion would be stimulating the local economy, particularly in light of COVID and what have you. So I figured the problem with that.
There's a, what about the law enforcement better than that, Carl? You can't, you don't think that Stucky Never Watch is a worthwhile public cause on that?
Oh, I do.
Oh, yeah.
City Council just needs to make findings.
Yeah, I got you.
To get their resolution for purposes of the administrative record.
You know, 200 seems like a lot. I don't think we'd have that much participation. But if we boil it down to 100 or 50 or whatever number we choose, there may be some initiation on that. Jeff, you think like I do, what, you're going to be too generous here, or what do you think?
No, I think $50,000 is a good start. We could actually add more if it's, if it's probably gets off. I think it's absolutely a good bang for the buck proposal on that, so. I like it.
And what, what figure did you say?
I'd say start with 50.
Well, we're only at 10 before.
Yeah.
Well, we could get, we probably get nearly 100 people with a, with a device for $10,000, you know.
All right, I mean, right, well, you know, it's not going to break the bank, and it seems like it's boots-on-the-ground kind of a deal.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one of those things where, if it's a successful program, we certainly have room in our budget to, to add to that budget mid-year if we need to, if it works out well. On the flip side, I'd hate to put, I'd hate to put a lot of money in the budget not if it fails and we don't spend it.
No, but if we put 10,000 aside just for the idea of 100 people are going to be, or anybody's going to be invited to participate, and we would like to think that they would be a participant in the Neighborhood Watch program.
Let's do it. I mean, I think that's, I think it's a great idea. I mean, anything you could do to add to those numbers, you know? You know?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a comment?
Here, go right ahead.
First off, I like the idea, but I wonder if there, there should be some metrics, though. I mean, I would fear that some people would just take the thing and then not participate.
Right.
Yep.
Well, at least got to come to a meeting, you know, so.
Right.
Yeah. I think. We'd have to work out.
Come up with that details, but I don't want to.
It would be revealed at a meeting, you know? What about, what about existing members as well? I'm sitting here thinking about it. We have people that have participated in Neighborhood Watch for years. Obviously, our friends at Ross and Street have been doing it forever. Would they complain that they didn't have an option, opportunity to take advantage of this program? Should we make it eligible for everybody that participates?
Well, the price just went up.
Well, I know that. I mean, I'm thinking that a lot. Well, not everybody would want it either.
Yeah, right.
That might be a good way to keep them, keep them as captains.
Yeah, we tell them if they quit Neighborhood Watch, we take the machine back there.
Well, we could work out some details and then come back. But I mean, 10 or 15 or whatever, $1,000 is something we could easily start on and, and, and work with. And if it went well, we could potentially look at doing it some more another time or, or tweak the program. It shouldn't be that complicated. Then defining the nexus between getting a device and how much you're involved is a little bit tricky. We'd want to board it in such a way so that we feel like we're gonna, you know, have a little bit out of what, you know, their effort, but we can't really hog time too much.
Did the price you quoted include installing the device or just the device itself?
Sacramento's the one doing the research. I thought it was, I thought it was, but I dare not promise that. But I don't think, I don't think that would be an issue. If, if we need to enhance it just slightly to make that an install as well, we could easily do that, I think.
All right, well, why don't you?
Let me ask this, Mr. Coops, do you want to bring an item back to council to talk about different variations of this program?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. I kind of intrigued by it because, you know, it's new technology that certainly has a use. And the city attorney says that if we can find a need for it that's acceptable, we can certainly do it legally. And I think it'd be something, again, we're innovators in Bellflower. Who else have ever done this stunt, you know?
There are some cities that have worked with Ring and done, you know, a little bit similar to this, but it sounds like we're taking it a notch beyond at least, so.
Yeah, so if you could develop something, we'll discuss it at the, we'll put something in the budget for it and let you do a little homework as to what the installation costs are, if it's included in the 200, and availability, and we'll figure out a way that we can market this in such a way that we're just not giving away free devices with no, no results.
And, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Council, this is Carl again. Joel, you may want to reach out to Chief Kelly Gordon at Monterey Park Police Department. They implemented a Ring program in that jurisdiction. And amongst other things, they asked that whoever got the Ring camera also enter into an agreement to share video with police in the event of criminal activity taking place near the Ring camera. So something else to think about.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great enhancement. All right, so are we right in thinking that we've asked all the questions of public safety of Joel? Can we move on to our next?
What number are you comfortable putting in as an earmark in the budget right now, do you think, Joel? Your recommendation?
$15,000 should be just fine.
All right, all right, I'm, how would the rest of my council colleagues feel about $15,000 for this endeavor? Mr. Santanaz?
I'm, yeah, I really want to start low on this, because we don't know how many participants we're going to have. So I would say stick with the 10,000. We can always add. I just hate to see money being, not being spent.
I can understand. How about you, Mr. Sanchez?
I can go either way. I'm okay with 10 or 15.
Okay. Mr. Hamada, how do you feel?
Same here. No, I'm, I'm glad we're, you know, discussing this and definitely, definitely want to, again, push the program and if there are ways to, to incentivize it, you know, it's definitely going to help, I think. So either way.
You, you have, your district has Ross and Street, which that's probably the strongest Neighborhood Watch in the community, wouldn't you say?
He pulls from more than just the neighborhood. He pulls from across the city, actually, so.
All right, well, that's, we might just sign, that's a good sign as well, maybe we. Let's do the, I'm going to go with the 15,000. Sunny, I hope that didn't hurt your feelings. We'll spend it.
How is we going to spend it?
Yeah, that's what we're going to try to do, and Joel's going to work up a scenario whereby we can all be protected and get some use out of these items. All right, so 15,000, and putting it back on Joel to develop a program. Let's move on to Public Works. Mr. Grecki?
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I think one of the items that you guys were looking for from Tuesday's meeting was to calculate the full-time equivalent, or the FTEs for my, the mowing that our crews do. So we've gone through that the last couple days. We sit at annually right around 5,100 hours in terms of doing our mowing, whether it's parks, satellite parks, setbacks, medians, and, and the trimming. And that works out for us just a little over $530,000 annually, just on that component of Public Works. So that, that was the, the numbers that we came up to that I believe Councilmember Santanaz asked us to research for him. And then additionally, the, what was just brought up, the radar feedback signs, that 40,000 is actually budgeted in Public Works. And we, we had put that in there. That will get us probably the equivalent of three different locations that we can determine where we want to put those in the city. The component of adding the flashing light to them, which council also brought up, would probably increase the cost by another couple thousand dollars. So if we wanted to increase that to 45,000 as opposed to 40,000, I believe we'd be able to get the type of signs that council was describing at Monday's meeting.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
Lynn, you want to talk about the phasing of your mowing contract?
Well, certainly, yeah. I mean, the, the way we're presenting it, and, and again, the, the number that, that we put in the budget is based off of a, a recent contract that was awarded in one of our neighboring cities. So I utilized those rates that they got in trying to factor in what, what it would cost us here in the city. Now, everything that I did in that was inclusive of everything. Our major parks, our non-staff parks, our setbacks, our medians, and a couple locations where we, where we have large segments of vines on the walls that would need to be, that would need trimming every couple months. So until we actually put the RFP out and we get the pricing back, that will really tell us where, where we're at with our estimate for the budget number that we put in. As it's presented right now, it is all-inclusive. It's, it's our major parks, it's, it's the satellite parks, it's medians, that's what we'd be looking at doing. I'm not sure that there's any benefit in, in phasing it, where we would perhaps do our unmanned parks right now and maybe our medians, and then come back six months or, or a year later and, and add to the contract. I mean, that's always an option, but I, I think for the purpose of at least putting the bid out and getting pricing, I'd want to price everything and then bring it to council. And then once we actually see those pricings, we can kind of determine whether we want to do it all or if we want to phase it in. That, that's my thoughts on it right now.
So Lynn, the magic number being about $500,000 we're spending now for those equivalent activities, is that what you're saying?
Well, that, no, it's about 530,000 just for staff time. You start factoring in the maintenance, the gas, and everything else that goes along with the various pieces.
Yeah, so if you had to put a number, what are we spending now doing it ourselves? All-in labor, parts, equipment replacement, gas, insurance, whatever you think. What do you think?
600 to 620,000 annually.
Right, so we'll wait and see how this comes back when you put out the RFP. I would hope that you come in somewhere around 400. Am I dreaming?
I, I think it will be less than that.
Sunny, you and I've had some discussion on that. You must have some questions, Mr. Grecki. Go for it.
Yeah, Lynn, can you clarify again, how many, how many, how many, how many, how many FTEs are we getting from the, based on your estimate right now?
It would probably be four or five time, four or five full-time employees.
Okay, okay. See, my, my thinking is, I understand that over the years, we added more responsibilities to Public Works. We added the parking structure, we added the Riverview Park and things like that. And I get it. And if we add more, more things for them to do, something is to give. And I completely accept that. So what, what I, what I think happened in the past was there are some things that are not being done because of lack of staffing, because you didn't add, add more staff to your, to your crew. But at the same time, I'm just kind of concerned about flipping the switch drastically, because people can go with four or five people. Two possibilities. One is there's so much work that are not being done because we're losing equivalent of four people because they're doing something else. Or if we switch to a full contract, that they may not have enough things to do. That's why when I spoke with, with Jeff and, and Mayor Coops about this, I was kind of pushing for, let's do it gradually. Maybe we can start with the passive parks, unsupervised parks, like Riverview Park, Palm State Park, Constitution Park. And then, but keep the money in the budget. I'm, I'm very supportive of the idea of, of doing this outside of the staffing. But I just want to make, I want to prove that, that we are spending our taxpayers' money physically responsibly. And the other thing that I was thinking is, if we can maintain the staff doing the supervised park, my thinking is, correct if I'm wrong, they will be there anyway, maintaining those parks. At the same time, we also, we still have the equipment. And I asked at the last meeting, what are we going to do with those equipment? We're going to sell them, and I, and I know that once we sell equipment like that, I mean, it's going to be sold at a very, very low price. We will not get as much money as, as we hope we could. So, and I like your idea now, since I heard about putting the RAP. I, I think this will open some kind of discussion. I'm not closing the door. Again, I'm very supportive of the idea, but I... I'm not closing the door. Again, I'm very supportive of the idea, but I just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sonny. So are you in agreement? Let Lynn go forward and do the RFP for the whole city?
Yeah, because we have a senior council of how much we're gonna contract out.
Okay.
I will give you that.
Okay, good. I am too. Mr. Hamada, I'd like to chime in on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, when I first heard of the mowing blow program, I, I thought that it's, it's a great opportunity for us to you know, shift our hours over to a contract and, and you know, likely you know, reap, you know, savings. So I think in general, it, it, it's, it's a great option, you know, for that service. And, you know, I think, I think it's gonna work out. One, one maybe side question for Lynn off of this, and this is maybe a good segue for it. Since I've been on council, I've, I've mentioned some issues about trees. And I know our, you know, tree trimmer is also contracted to plant trees. Yes, all right. Thank you, Lynn. And I just sometimes wonder about the replacement of some of the trees that go missing from some of our public medians and our, some of the tree wells that are still remaining. What, what's, what's their schedule for that? And if there's, and if that's not the priority, you know, cost, you know, for the, for the contractor. I mean, do we need more to get some of that back? Because I mean, I wouldn't say there's, I mean, there's a huge number, but there's enough to say, you know, you know, why that, you know, why that tree well hasn't been planted for, for years or something like that. So is there an opportunity here to make sure we, you know, we, we, you know, take care of that aspect?
The I, I don't think there's, and I don't think there's a reason to increase the budget. The, the planting of trees component of our contract with WCA is just a matter of them being given a list of locations and, and, and coming out and doing it. Now, they, they typically, what they like to do when they schedule the work, they don't want to come out and plant one tree or two trees. So we, we normally give them a list and it'll be a list where they come in town for a week or so. That happens a couple of times a year where they'll come in. Now, we can certainly increase it and, and do that. And I don't think it's going to be a, a major impact to the budget. So I, I don't, you know, we're, we're in budget discussions, obviously, but I don't think there's a need at this moment to increase our contract with WCA to necessarily try to plant more trees. It's just a matter of having them plant more trees, giving them bigger list and having them come in more frequently.
Okay, I will give you the list, Lynn.
Mr. Mayor.
Not if I, not if I can pass over first.
All right, that's the race. Okay. Get on, man. All right, thank you.
Yep. Is that it? Mr. Hamada, any other question?
Oh, I think Public Works, I thought was, just looking at all my notes and such, I think I'd asked them and I think they were addressed. I think, yeah, I think I'm, I'm good with Public Works.
Could I just ask one more question clarification? Are the council good with one contract from Lynn as opposed to a series? And just implement the single contract and phases wherever he works it out with the vendor?
Yeah. I, I would say do one big contract and see what it is.
Okay.
Probably get the best price that way, rather than piecemeal.
Yeah, I don't want to, I would, I would recommend against a piecemeal contract as well. That's why I'm bringing it up.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, for the record, I was gonna support the RFP, seeing what we get as a full package as well, and then kind of going from there. Lynn, on that note, I, please correct me if I'm wrong here. On the, on freeing up of staff, is, is one of the goals gonna be to kind of tackle some of, because I know the staff do a really, really tremendous job of, of kind of dealing with all the illegal dumping that's going on in, in the city. But it is a revolving door. Is that gonna be part of that plan too, to kind of keep addressing those in a more proactive manner, instead of waiting for calls and things of that nature? Or is that part of the plan?
Um, yeah, I mean, so I mean, if, if, if my, my streets crews, if, if they're loaded up with the mowers and they're, they're on the way to do medians and they see a couch, they're not, they're not going to pick it up. You know, they're, they're, they're already loaded down with equipment and stuff. So, yeah, I, I think it's, it's, it's fairly clear that by, by taking away this task, there's, there's more opportunity for them throughout today to do other tasks. And whether that is doing additional painting, doing additional work in, in our facility sites, refreshing all of our street legends, our stops, our stop bars throughout the entire city. So there's, they'll be freed up to do more of that work. So I think it's safe to, safe to say that, yeah, if, if they weren't doing their, their normal mowing and blowing, then they, they would be freed up to, to address other things. I mean, ultimately, that's, that's the whole purpose behind this, you know? So I, I think there can be much more time spent on detailed work, whether it's at our parks or whether it's at our facilities that the guys just can't get to right now. When we were talking a couple of days ago, I was talking to the mayor about this and I just happened to be signing an invoice where we repainted the, the building out there over at Sims Park. I had to contract that out. That was a little over six thousand dollars to have that building painted. If my guys weren't out there doing their satellite sites and mowing, mowing that park, not mowing that park, doesn't have grass yet. But if they're mowing Crowthers North, they're mowing River View in their satellites, they have time to paint that building themselves. So really, ultimately, what I'm trying to do is although, although mowing is, especially in the parks, it's extremely important. It takes up a tremendous amount of time. And in, in doing that task, there's a lot of stuff that gets neglected just because there's simply not enough hours in the day and we, we, we don't have enough manpower to do it.
Thank you, Lynn. Yeah, I think it was you who had shared that you, your crew, you actually have a crew that you send out every morning. And so I figured it was part of the plan. But anyways, I just wanted to ask that. And then regards to the, your radar adjustment from forty to forty-five thousand, I'm on board with that as well. I did have one more question for you, and that was related to the capital projects of fencing, vacant lots and rows. You have budgeted, it's, it's an actual carryover of sixty-four thousand five hundred, and you don't have anything budgeted on twenty-two, twenty-three. Do we? And maybe I'm understanding this incorrectly here, but i- is this the funding that we use when we go out and, and kind of take over a lot that hasn't been kept, kept well and we go in and abate, abate it? Is that gonna be enough funding for you or please clarify?
It, it really, it really depends on the size of the lot. But yeah, that's what that line item is for. I think we're, I think just a few minutes ago, I saw some emails coming through regarding the lot up there on Somerset. We're, we're getting fairly close to getting that one underway for the, for the, I guess, for the first of many that we're gonna be looking at doing. If I turned around and did the the gold site on Belfar Boulevard, I'd spend, I think, probably three times that budget amount just on that location. So it's, it's really gonna vary on the lot sizes and, and, and what we're doing and what we're going after. But that's, that's a good starting point for us because I think we can get some of the smaller ones done with, with that dollar amount.
Okay. So in other words, if we need to, we'll pull it at one point in time from somewhere else? Is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. In, in other words, if, if we get, we get a couple of lots done and then there's, there's another one in the hopper, but we're not, we're not funded to do it budgetly, you know, in the, from the aspect of the budget, we don't have enough money. We would simply come back to council and, and ask for an increase in that line item to
Okay.
do it, another lot or two other lots or however many more it is.
Perfect. All right. That's, that was my question. All right. Thank you. That's it, Lynn. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. So Lynn, when we do these, say, for instance, we did the gold lot and we'd have to expend our resources, but we're gonna recoup that, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. But when, when we, when we recoup that is, remains to be seen, you know?
Aren't we gonna put it on their tax bill?
Yeah, no. Well, he's right. Lynn's right. We would, we would have to take a budget increase to do the work. But we would recoup that money, whether or not we were to recoup it the same fiscal year, maybe unlikely, but we can certainly work that out.
No, but it's not a gift for it.
No.
No.
Never be a gift.
Okay, yeah. But, and I get about, maybe one year where we spend it, it might take a couple of years to get it back.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've been pretty lucky getting some quick reimbursements in the recent past, but that's kind of new. Maybe Mr. Kemp, it's genius that he could do that. But I, I've got, in years past, that's taken some time. So.
All right. So I'm back to Lynn. Mr. Sanchez, for extra five thousand dollars on top of the forty, are you okay with the blinky light?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And Mr. Hamada, you're.
That's good. Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. Sanzinez, what, blinky light okay for you for five thousand on three?
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely.
Okay. So then, then that we had Lynn figured out. And here's a question for you. I just happen to think, if you've got, I know you're working with hauling a lot of stuff out when our homeless people leave it behind. Do you have the suitable equipment to do that? Or I know you got stakebody trucks. Do they have a lift gate or they have some capability where, you know, some of the stuff they leave behind is not that light? Do you need some help on it?
No, we're, 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 we're okay on equipment in that, in that realm of things. We're, we're fine. We get it done.
Okay, well, I just could you paint the fender on that one truck? It looks pretty sad. Little can of Rust-Oil can go along.
I was, I was supposed to replace the truck, but Ron raided my equipment replacement fund.
Well, I'll get you, I'll get you some spray paint. I think it'll there, there were three trucks just like that. That's about a, oh, I think that's about a nineteen ninety model, isn't it? That, that, that stakebody truck with the poor paint job. That's one GM had all the paint flake off.
Yeah, we, yeah, some, some of our stuff's pretty, you know, pretty well out there in age and everything, but we, we, we make do. I'll, I'll make a note of it and, and get it, get it taken care of.
Well, it's, it's a matter of pride. You know, you have some really nice trucks out there and you got some that really don't look so hot. And I'm trying just to equalize things a little bit if it needs a little budget help.
Yeah.
He wants to order a couple Ford Raptors to do the work. Is that okay? So.
Well, that's about it. I'm always surprised what nice equipment Joel's able to pull out of the sky. So I think we're pretty well, you've got your ideas that we're gonna go forward on the, with the treat, the landscape, how that's gonna work out, five thousand on the other deal. And I think we're pretty well are finished now with the public work stuff. What do you think? We're moving on? All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on. What's, who, who next of our department heads wants to give a report?
Mr. Milano, you wanted to lead the charge?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. My one follow-up item, and I'm anticipating some additional discussion as well on grants, but my one follow-up item was the shade structures for the playgrounds. So we did a little research. I got several quotes. And these are not cheap. They are between fifty and seventy thousand dollars per unit if, if we want to do it right. And that would include engineering drawings, calculations, the poles need to. It's a huge construction project. So again, it's fifty to seventy thousand dollars all in, including installation. If it is something that we would like to consider, I would recommend starting with the projects we have in the budget that are already being constructed. So that would be year one, we're redoing the surfacing at Palm Street Park. And in year two of the budget, we are replacing the playground equipment at Thompson Park. So I would recommend if this is something the city council wanted to do, we allocate the funds with those projects as a start. So, so that would be my recommendation on the shade structures. And so that's all I had as far as follow-up on that. And then I, I know there are some questions coming regarding possible grants at, at some of the different parks and some of the projects coming up.
All right. Mr. Hamada, any questions of what was just reported or new questions of PJ?
Again, I wanted to commend PJ for, you know, moving on, you know, someone to, you know, put some time into grants. So I think that's a must. And so I think stuff always gets kind of like published out there. And so hopefully, you know, we can, you know, we can tap into that. You know, something else popped up PJ, and, and I think I've mentioned this before, and it was, it was it was about the fixed bus routes. And I remember I had somebody ask me, why doesn't the bus go out to the corner of Lakewood and Gardendale Foster? Because they were going to take the train. But they got dropped off at Rosecrans in Lakewood, so they had to walk and carry all their, their baggage. So is there any future time to look at the routes? And obviously, I know with a, with a modified route, that could, that, that could obviously modify the need for a budget, you know, to, you know, to cover it. Expanded travel and so on. So has there been a, a great need? I, I just, I just saw it as something as, you know, sort of logical is because of that, you know, mass transit, you know, facility up there. People, yeah.
Yes, sir. A- as of right now, I don't see a great need. There's never an issue with going to our service provider and having them take a look at the routes. But demand, especially this past year with the pandemic, we're nowhere near where we need to be as far as needs go. We did research this, I want to say, four to six years ago on even the possibility of adding a route. And I, and I think with the transit center coming in, that is a possibility. But I, I do want to state too, there's several other service providers that come into the city. And we also help subsidize our ridership, Long Beach Transit, Norwalk Transit. So I, I don't think there's a huge demand for us to alter ours, but it, it, it's never an issue to look at for our, for our local transit.
All right. Okay, thank you. Yeah. I mean, I took it as more of a, a future, you know, study. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. In regard, again, yeah, grants, again, I, I, hopefully we could, you know, tap into more. So, and whatever there is available. Sometimes, you know, the, some of the grants, I mean, they'll definitely vary in size of the amounts, but then, then the scope of, 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 of the, of the award. But overall, again, I and again, this is, I think, one of those ongoing things is, is to, to look at our park needs and, and, you know, thank you for that information in regards to that prior assessment back in two thousand sixteen and, and how the city worked with the community to, to, to try to, you know, prioritize the, the need. And, and there's been some, some progress, definitely. So, so obviously with time. So maybe that question is leading towards, you know, how often do we expect to do that type of assessment? Either with the county telling us every five years or, 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 or as we see people, you know, the, you know, demanding more of the outdoors and we need to have those, you know, facilities there for them. I mean, how often is that needed?
Well, a- as of right now, the county is actually, um, updating and refreshing the, um, the amenities assessment that that I sent to you. So that's being updated this month, actually. There we have to get that in. Um, the the full assessment that they did was the most, um, extensive and comprehensive assessment that's been done in a long time. Prior to that, uh, we refer back to our general plan, um, which is, uh. Many, many years ago, and and that's where where we're at with it. But the amenities section is being updated. But as far as, uh, prior to that, there wasn't a a heavy, um, uh, emphasis on it. But we are we are updating that and it is nice to look at it to see where we were deficient in some of the amenities and what we've been able to do. Just in the last five years. And then obviously, we have the jumbo projects that are on the priority, um, park list as well.
What what was the the community turnout for that? I I I was going through it all and. I recall it wasn't a a huge number of people that showed up to, uh, you know, put their little sticker on 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 each sheet and. Um, was it about 50 or so?
There there was right about 50, um, uh, yeah, for for the meeting.
All right, well, that's, yeah, actually, I think that's a small number. We we definitely need to, uh, to encourage the public to to to. Hopefully speak up and and, you know, participate and and it's it's all about just asking and then we go from there to figure out if if if. If there's funding and if and if, uh, you know, uh, there's that need and so on, so.
I I will say this, that we were actually commended by the county. We were.
Yeah.
Operated, uh, as far as outreach goes.
Yeah.
And, uh, received funding for that. There was also some online participation to get it started and and initiate the projects. But that final vote meeting, there were 50 at that one.
All right. So did you also do it at the street fest back then?
There there were so, yes, there were several different things and and looks at some of the different projects, yes.
Okay. All right, all right, okay, thank, thank you, Pete. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, oh, no, I think that's more for for Jim, sorry. Okay, all right, thank you, PJ. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jim, why don't you go ahead and take off the next one? If there's no more questions from council, we'll get started from there.
All right, um, Jeff, I have just a couple of couple of comments for. Uh, yeah, yeah, I know that, uh, you, Jeff, you're very sticky in terms of adding staff.
Right.
And, uh, so adding a staff in Parks Parks and Rec, I I think it's a it's a very wise move. Uh, I I think it's gonna it's gonna pay off handsomely, especially when we talk about grant riding.
I agree. I mean, I I actually think it's overdue. I've been holding PJ off for multiple years on this, and this is the year that I think we can afford it well over.
I think I think it's very timely. And and secondly, regarding the shade in the, uh, in the park. Uh, it's not high on my list because I, when I, after our discussion last, um, uh, Monday. I remember my teacher in grade school, that was although that's many, many months ago, she keeps telling us, go out there, play in the, play in the playground. Get in the sun. So, and I know I burned myself many, many times playing out there in the sun. So anyway, so but if you really want to push that, I'm okay with it, but, uh, it's not high on my list. Thank you.
Look, it should have planted more trees back when.
Well, it's not, it's not too late. We can always plant.
All right, thank you. What do you think about $70,000 shade for the playground equipment?
Oh, for me, uh.
What's your opinion of the that expenditure?
Well, I, you, you know, I I kind of use our church example. We're we're trying to figure that out too and and and. It's not cheap, unfortunately, you know, fortunately, and, uh, um, over time, uh, um. I think, uh, I think the equipment itself needs to be designed and have some sort of, uh. You know, added features to it. We might be able to look at that option, uh, some of the equipment so that it 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 actually builds in. Shade with with the slide or something that that would, uh, but but initially, I mean, I I'm I'm open to it. But, uh, it's, uh, it's 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 a it's a it's a price, it's a it's a hefty price tag. But, uh, um, so if we if, and I don't know, again, if, um, if, uh. Any of the any of the ARP money can 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 be put into, put in the parks.
PJ, do you know if that's a possibility?
Uh, a- at this, at this point, I don't think we have any guidelines yet. It, um, doesn't have anything.
We have, we have no guidelines yet at all.
That's that's been the issue, yeah.
All right, Mr. Hamada, any more questions of Mr. PJ?
Uh, I think that covered it. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, questions of Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was in and out, so I I think I missed, uh, a couple of comments. Um, but, uh.
First, we decided to sell Constitution Park or your route.
What?
We gave the lease back to Edison.
Thank you, thank you.
No, go ahead.
Um, I I do want to echo some interest, um, um, from a council member Hamada's on the local bus route. And, um, maybe future study on that at a later date. Uh, definitely have questions around that. I don't want to get into too much details. But, uh, definitely want to echo those sentiments. And then, um, with relations to the shade structures. Um, I was not expecting for such a high number, uh, 50 to 70,000 dollars. Uh, was not what I was hoping for. Um, definitely still interested in entertaining either the idea. But not sure if, uh, it's the right moment or time. Uh, but with that said, I do want to, I've talked to Jeff. And I've talked to, uh, my fellow councilman, we're sending something mess and we've talked about the possibility. I know we have a, we have a. Needs assessment of our parks, but I think it might be wise for us to have a, come up with a master plan. And I and I don't know what that would would cost us to do or, but maybe wise to budget for a master plan study, um, for a parks program. And so, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, I could start. Uh, PJ and I talked about that this morning and, uh, we thought it's not an easy task. Uh, and to embellish, this this conversation kind of comes out of the blue a little bit. It it ties into several things we've talked about. Starting at the last budget process and follow conversations over the last two days. And we've discussed a lot of, uh, uh, things about parks and what we want to do at Constitution Park and Palms Park and other parks. And what's coming up and and we've talked about the past is that the MTA is looking at purchasing HSP. Prospectively for, uh, a maintenance yard on that. And of course, that is a potential recreation facility. We've kind of spitballed around if that indeed does happen, that there'd be a significant amount of money that we would try to probably utilize. For additional recreation and parks programs and additional park space. Um, and rather than just start talking about it, I think it's probably time we start planning for it. And PJ and I spoke this morning and we think that a comprehensive analysis of additional park space programs. Things we could do to utilize our park space better, we're looking at $150,000 to do that. It's it's a fairly big task. But in light of what's coming up and and things we're going to be talking about over the next two years, I think it's probably a reasonable expenditure. And I know it's a lot of money to throw at you at the 11th hour, but it it does dovetail together with all the issues we've been discussing over the last three or four days. And PJ, what did I miss? Did I miss anything that you want to add to help on that?
Over the past few days, I I've, um, done a little research with other cities on what the costs are. And they do vary depending on the scope of what we would want to do with a parks master plan. But, uh, if we do want to do it right, and I think we have the potential of a a lot of money coming our way. With these new federal grants, Measure A, as well as Jeff mentioned, the sale of the MTA. Um, we're looking at budgeting about $150,000 and then obviously going out to RFP. But that would be comprehensive, cover, uh, our our park and facility assessment needs, uh, which which we've been doing. Um, but go a little more in depth, also cover our programming operations, how to move forward most efficiently. Um, including i- i- if we are looking at more sports fields and and things of that nature on a larger scale. Um, utilizing those things better for revenue, uh, in in the future, uh, on a recreational element. So. But, uh, yeah, that that price point would would be about right, um, i- if we're going to do this and then go out to RFP for it.
And I did, I think, I think Mr. Sanchez jumped the gun a little bit, but it's it's a good time to discuss it as any, I suppose. In that I think that what Mr. Sanchez is proposing is that we would add that as a budget item this year. As an additional council requested project. Am I right, Victor?
It's a, it's a thought. I mean, I, I'm willing, I want to throw it out there and and see if it's something that the the group wants to do. Um, at the end of the day, that's how it's going to work. And so I just want to make sure that we put it on the table because if we've got two items, we've got. You know, the shades or we've got this potential project, then I think it's fair to say we've got to make a decision or none.
Well, and frankly, we've had several discussions about, uh, the manning of parks and how we're going to man them, but which parks to man. And and frankly, it's kind of taken us out of the box, the things we haven't really thought about over the last year or so. And something would be given a lot of thought to over the last several days. So anyway, that's where that stands at the moment.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I don't have any further questions. I just wanted to have that conversation and bring that to the table at this point.
Okay.
Uh, and see if we want to talk about it.
All right, uh, we'll move on to Sunny Sanz. Have any questions or comment about parks budget?
I already get my gave me comments earlier, so thank you.
All right. So what do you think about the, did I get your opinion on the shade over the playground equipment?
Uh, me? Uh, well, I said earlier, uh, it's not high on my list because, um, when we were discussing it, um, uh, last Monday. Uh, it kind of reminded me my my teachers many, many, many years ago. My grade school teacher said, go out there and play under the sun. And I got burned so many times. So, uh, I I I can support this, but again, it's not high on my on my list.
Okay, and how about your feel on $150,000 park study? How do you feel about that?
I want to hear from staff, uh, more more information about it. Are we looking at the master plan for the whole city or just?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, this is all, this is all fairly sudden, and I think I want to take this up as a separate item as well. And get more counsel and frankly, more community input, how we're going to go about this. But, uh, yeah, it would be a comprehensive citywide, uh, study in the way I envision it.
Yeah, a- and the the, just to, um, to add on to what Jeff said, looking at the other RFPs and what the other cities were able to get out of it. Uh, that cost includes, uh, all the community engagement, uh, that we did with the large needs assessment with the county as well. And it would be citywide. It would be a master plan for parks citywide.
Yeah, well, if that's the case, then I very supportive of that, uh, compared to the shade for the for the park. Uh, I I think I'll support the the master plan.
All right. Mr. Hamada, you were, uh, very, uh, excited about the shades. What's your opinion on the, uh, $150,000? Uh, plan?
Well, they're nice. Shades are nice, but.
Oh, well, I know they're nice.
When you want to prioritize, uh, spending, uh, and and, um, and to, uh, figure out. Again, uh, you know, all the park needs. Um, you know, hopefully there's grant money out there to 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 maybe do some this kind of studying. And and if it's in in line with maybe, uh, some of the general plan update, um, uh, would it be related? And could, uh, as we study open space, uh, could something like this, uh, you know, dovetail with it?
Yeah. You you got my attention on that. We're going to have to look into that.
Yeah, uh, because I, well, that's, that was one question for Beth when when Beth comes up, but, uh, um. That's that's a possibility where there might be some 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 funds. So, uh, no, I I I definitely want to study parks too. And 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 so I had, you know, uh, and I'd love to see some changes to to Zen Park, of course, too. But, uh, you know, but I got to put that in the big picture, so.
Uh, uh, PJ, grant money, is there any, is there any grant money for such studies available for the county or state that you were?
We can look at, I know that there's some, some assistance help that just came out with Measure A. And because we are in the high need area, um, we'll have to look into if it can be towards a master plan or not. So we'll definitely look into that because there there is some money there for us in the high need area.
Yeah, I I I believe this is going to be a separate agenda item. Um, I think it would be prudent to park some money aside for that. But I think that we need to come back to council with a more thought-out approach and how we're going to do this. And, uh, if there's general support, I'd be, I'd be looking for direction to do that because I think, I personally think it's well worth looking into. And, uh, uh, but we have some homework to do before we do that as well.
You know, in my opinion, if we were to make a deal with the metro for the paintball park. That would change or that would develop the whole plan for all our parks in such a way that we wouldn't have redundancy. Um, so I think the best plan would be derived when we know whether or not we're going to have a recreational possibility. At the paintball park in the future or, because if that is a part of the future of our parks and rec. You know, there could easily be several acres of land that is left alone that we can keep. Um, and we have no other parks in that part of town. It's something that we maybe can consider. And I'm like Mr. Hamada, I'm totally in agreement if we can find some money that would support this. And I'm not saying it all had, if if we get 100,000, we put in 50,000, that would be great if PJ could find if that's a possibility. We'll support it. And it's good to have a plan. And the hard part is to, you know, I'd love to do more development in some of the parks that we have leased land and like Zen Park. Which is, there's no bathroom, so we don't have any personnel there. Same story with Constitution Park, same story with the Linear Park in Palm Street. We'll never own that land, I don't think. And and as a result, I'm not even sure there's even the possibility of putting, uh, restroom facilities. Which predicates people being there. So. That's a hard discussion as well. I mean, I'd love to have some personnel in those parks to really develop it, but they're not oriented towards that. Am I wrong in thinking that, PJ?
No, and and it is a catch 22 at those unsupervised parks. Uh, if you put a restroom out there. Um, that's a, that that's an entirely different discussion operationally, um, that that we would need to have. Uh, I have major concerns with, um, just safety, uh, with that and not having people there. As as well as maintaining it, uh, to the level and standards that our community needs, um, i- if we have restrooms out there. So it it is a a a difficult conversation to have. Uh, I I'm not sure this is where to have it. But it it because it it does impact operations a lot, um, and and how you maintain, how you keep it safe, how you keep, uh. You you know, eyes on the park, different things like that when you when you have a public restroom there.
Exactly. And so that's why we're in so many transitional areas here, especially with park space. You know, we're going to really hate to relinquish any park space to the metro, but it may be a deal where we have no choice in the matter. And we just have to negotiate the best stance we can. Uh, but I think at this point, why don't you just look for the 150? We're all in agreement. We need a a plan and none of us wants to pay for it. But if you can find some money, that would be very helpful. Can we leave it at that? And I don't think you're, the idea on the shades is going forward, Victor. That's just too expensive.
Yes, well, we'll look into it. We're doing it as we speak and, uh, see if there's any other state funding, uh, we can look at as well. The the only one I can think of at the top of my head would be Measure A, the TAP funds, the assistance funds. So we'll look into that for sure.
Thank you, PJ. Any other questions of Parks and Rec before we move on to the next department? Seeing none, who wants to be next on the department list?
I can go, Mayor. Um, I didn't have any, uh, follow-up questions, but it sounds like I might have some new questions to answer here today. So, um, I'm I'm all ears.
All right, Jim, you've got the floor. And so, uh, questions, Sunny Sanz, yes. I, development questions of Mr. Deo Anga.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jim, I know that we have the budget for the mural for Lakewood.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, remind me, how much will it cost to do that mural?
I believe that's going to be in the 50,000, 40 to 50,000 dollar range.
Uh, so what I'd like to suggest is how about, uh, how about doing the same thing underneath? So what I'd like to suggest is, how about, how about doing the same thing underneath Clark, Clark Avenue?
Clark Avenue mural?
So that all the overpasses in Bellflower will be covered with mural. We have Bellflower and then we're gonna cover Lakewood. And then, because that, that part of town is kind of sad, especially at night. So if we can push it up a little bit, I think that will come a long way.
We can do that if you guys would like us to do that. We can start scouting muralists and, and what do you think, Jeff?
I have, I would wait.
Okay. We could, we could, we actually have street improvement funds, which I think murals would fall under. That is a budget item already in the budget at $151,000. And we can pull from that budget item and not have to raise the budget.
Do you think because of the length of that particular overpass, will it cost more or less than Lakewood?
It, a lot of, will depend on the mural design. We, one thing we found when talking to Caltrans for the Lakewood mural is that they were very happy that we didn't put the painting underneath the actual overpass where it was dark. They liked it on the edges, on the four corners of the mural or on the, of the overpass. And that, they looked really favorably upon that. And so I think we could probably keep it right around the same price point, depending on the, the design of the mural, which can't be too elaborate because you can't have logos and certain guidelines that we have to follow and not too bright of colors and so forth, as we're finding out. So, I really think we can keep it within the same price range.
Okay, all right. If we can look into that, that would be appreciated. And secondly, I know that you're doing some kind of study on Lakewood Boulevard for some kind of a medical campus, so to speak.
Yes.
How far are you in that study?
Our consultant we hired, Kaiser Marston and Associates, is just probably on the tail end of that study. We should find out, probably before the end of May. Get a, get a draft report from that study and have it finalized by early June.
Okay, so we don't yet, we need some kind of funding to, to make this, to make their proposals into reality.
Not at this point. Were you gonna say, Jeff?
Just, just that, not yet.
Okay.
So we'll keep, we'll keep our eyes open on that. Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Victor Sanchez, any questions of our development department? Can you hear me, Victor?
He's muted.
I'm here.
All right. So you have the floor on questions for economic development.
Yeah, I thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, I just have a couple of questions, two actually. One was relations, it was in page 206, relations to your, kind of your goals. On the, continue to promote for underdevelopment or promotion for developed of various underutilized and vacant lots throughout the community. Can you kind of just kind of look like and which lots you're talking about?
Sure. This is a citywide effort where we look at vacant and underutilized lots everywhere and market them. We have, in, in normal years, we have marketing flyers and brochures that we have available online as well as a hard copy. We take these also to conferences and so forth. And we market stuff, all these properties. And this is, we're talking about stuff like Stater Brothers, Kmart, the vacant properties at Woodruff and Artesia. All these, there's one on Artesia and Clark, former gas station. We market all of these properties, whether or not the owners want us to or not. We are very proactive in getting the word out to them. We also, when we get inquiries by phone, we, we send these types of things out and we find out what they're kind of looking for. And then we can kind of narrow down what properties to kind of send to the developers or interested parties that are interested in these lots. So, that's kind of what we do. We, and when it comes to these vacant and underutilized properties, the downtown as well. And we also do it for the downtown properties when they come available.
Perfect. The, I think, we had a recent tour that we took out over in Santa Ana. We talked about a little bit about parklets. Is that something that you foresee us getting involved in, doing a study? Or even just having a conversation about in the future? And do you need any funding for that?
It's a good question and it might be more of a joint departmental discussion to have. Because when you're talking about parklets, you bring in planning issues as well as public works issues, since we're on the public right of way, and safety issues as well, since you're, you're moving the placement of people out closer to traffic. And so there's that, there's a safety factor there as well. You know, this is one of those things where we talked about like up by Greek Market where, you know, they wanted to put people, they actually moved the sidewalk inwards to have the pedestrian movement a little bit farther away from the street while creating some protected areas up at the curb face. So, it's, I think it's a multi-departmental discussion that we could have to look at, maybe doing a pilot or something of that nature in a certain spot on Bellflower Boulevard.
But you don't need any funding for that at all, right? You, you're, that's just still, let's just have a conversation first.
Yeah, I think it's a conversation at first and we could look at my, again, from the last presentation, my funding is pretty broad and flexible. And we did that on purpose so that we, something comes up and we have a discussion and something is, we want to try something, we have the ability to do that. So, I think we, it's worth a discussion. We can see where it goes from there.
Perfect. Great. I just want to make sure you have the tools and the resources. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada, you're on, what do you, Economic Development.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I had a few questions and, and thank you, Sunny, for taking one of them. So, that's good. Good about someone else is watching out for some of the other, you know, overpasses that are dark and gloomy. I think we definitely need to work with Caltrans and that's kind of leading to, you know, again, there may be some grant money out there and the states, you know, the money they spend on their, you know, freeway improvements and they, and they've incorporated designs now. There might be, there might be some leftover there to, to, you know, take, again, tag on. So, Jim, I think one of the, one of the best things you guys do is the marketing of this city. And, and do you feel you have enough? Because the one, the one point I've, I've been, when I talk to some of the, the owners of centers, they, they're, they always try to seek assistance on, hey, do you know any, whatever? You know, and so Jim, do you, do you maintain a list or from like, you know, calls you receive? Or that, you know, people are, I mean, they want to come to Bellflower to open either a small cafe or, or a shop or, or some kind of service. Because again, I know it's, during this time, it's, 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 it's all been skewed. And, and you know, there's, we've seen vacancies. And so, it would, it would help greatly out there if, if for some reason we've maintained some contacts, people, people that call in that, that show interest in Bellflower. And if we, if there's, if we know there's space available. Obviously, that works both ways. We should have the property managers, you know, connected so that they can too, you know, again, send out requests and, and seek some, you know, seek some assistance from us that, hey, yeah, there's been some people interested in, and want to open this. And so we just refer them over.
We, we do do that regularly, Councilmember Hamada. We are on first name basis with some of the brokers in, in the city for some of these properties, especially our high profile ones such as Stater Brothers and Kmart, as I brought up earlier. And we, we usually get those calls and, and within, I would say a day or two, we are trying to make those connections if we get somebody that calls in and is looking for a certain amount of space or a certain type of property. So we try to get those turned around as quickly as possible. One of the things that we have, we are in the process of doing, and this is just, this is brand new and is actually not a, not a major budget impact at all, but it's in the process here. As we are getting a contact database that we are, for all the small business, actually all the businesses in town. And we found that we could have communicated during COVID a little bit better with the businesses. And social media is one really good way of doing it. But if we could have some type of direct connect with the business community, that would have been better to get the word out with on these grants, whether they were our grants, county or state grants that were made available. We, we came, it happened across this database that we found that will really help us track and know who we're contacting and when and how we did it. And that the key will be to work with planning, who administers the business licenses, to encourage the businesses, all new businesses, as they come in, to add their email address to the, to the business license, because they are not required as part of the business license application. So once we get those, we can send out direct emails to these folks rather than trying to get to them indirectly and track the responses that we get. So, this database is gonna be, I think, a big help for all staff members here in economic development. Because we'll be able to know who's talked to them last and what the, what the discussion was with that particular business and what their needs are. It, yes, it focuses on the business community, but, and, but we still do what you were saying to earlier, alluding to trying to connect people looking for space with the brokers or the, the property managers of these properties out there. We're still, we're still doing that regularly.
So maybe back to the question of, is there a need for more funding to, to do community promotions, marketing, you know, outreach? Is there a need for more, more tech for the department to, to, to address some of that?
To answer your question, at this time, I think we are good. And it's gonna be interesting to see how we, how things bounce back from the pandemic. Retail has been slow and difficult, as we found out from Vanessa in trying to get her, her center leased. And, and trying to get the tenants in there hasn't been easy. And that's why that, that project is now phased versus all in one project. So, it, as we come out of the pandemic and things start to maybe have the new normal associated with it, we'll get a feel for, for where we're at. I, right now, I think we're, we're well, well situated in the funding realm for that. And even pre-pandemic, we were doing quite well marketing the city with what we had. And I don't think there's a need for additional funding at this point.
All right. I did also have a chance to go out with you and Councilman Sanchez to visit Santa Ana. And, and the parklet or the little, you know, pop out parklets were probably some of the best I've ever seen. I've seen the ones out in Venice, they use and they're pretty makeshift. But these, these were done with some more quality materials and, and they were, I think, placed properly. The way they fitted in with the street design, not only with the drainage, plus the extension of the curb and so on. Definitely, there would be an opportunity here in town. And that leads me to the question that I know since we have that sort of permit we have now to allow restaurants to go out in our public right of way. Are we still looking at, at that to continue it? And I know that's been, it's, it's worked out really well for some of the restaurants. So is, is there, is there a sunset on that or initially, or are we?
Yes, I believe, excuse me, oh, excuse me, I believe the sunset is July 30th for that, the emergency grant, however we word that, ordinance, business assistance help for the pandemic. That could be, that could be a discussion to be had, whether to make it permanent and how to do that for some of the businesses. Most people took advantage, well, actually I've seen a little bit of both, behind buildings as well as on the sidewalk. And I tend to like the sidewalk stuff. It livens up the sidewalk and you see a lot of people out there. And that's, you know, right up my alley, what I do. And so I like seeing that, it just, it's a bummer that our sidewalk is wider in some places to assist other restaurants with, with the same ability with some, some places lucked out with where they were located because they had wider sidewalk space and, and could accommodate the tables and so forth. But that is a discussion we can easily have as we get closer to that deadline, as to how to maybe make that permanent.
All right. Next question centers around Chodos. Yeah, from our last group discussion on it, what was the deadline on the spending of that money?
I believe we had five, five years before we had to spend that, yes.
So.
And it was just a portion of what we have too. It's kind of a rolling scale.
Yeah, so. Has that opportunity been marketed out there? With some of the, either the Chodos in town, I don't, there might be only one or two. But some of the other ones we've worked with, or are we looking at possibly another type of project?
Yes, we are actually looking at a potential permanent supportive housing project. And that's why we're looking at building up the pot. Because the more, the more funding you have, the more impact you could have to a project, especially one that would cost millions and millions of dollars. So that's, we've been slowly rolling over, carrying over the Chodo funds from year to year and adding to that pot to try to boost the amount of money in that pot. And this permanent supportive housing project would be like the next step from the shelter.
Okay, I'm aware of that project that's being discussed. All right. Yeah, I think it's, as you mentioned before, that it's gonna take some joint, joint department on some things. And so I, I will save that maybe for, for, for one of the other departments to start some discussion. So, Jim, thank you, Jim. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Jeff, I've got a, I don't know whether or not I bring this up at this point with Jim and economic development or with Tay Ree, the idea of trying to create a potential property acquisition fund, where would that fall?
Um, I would have to let Tay answer that. We'd have to create a special section of the budget, I believe, to do that. And I would probably leave it economic development, but I'd create a separate line item. Tay, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, I think Public Projects Fund, Fund Number 012, may be the best candidate for that. Council created that fund by resolution and we can just transfer funding from the general fund. And maybe any other viable funding sources.
Good. It does go beyond the scope of the Public Projects Fund as we know it though, but that's okay. I don't mind that.
It could be for economic development, property acquisition.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that.
All right. So let's, then I won't bring it up at this part of the discussion. I don't have any questions of Jim. So we will proceed to our next department head. Who wants to go next?
Mayor, before you continue, is there a dollar amount that you were thinking about transferring into that fund?
I'm thinking 500,000 to a million dollars. I've got to get some council feedback. This is kind of a new place. We've never been before. But that's kind of where I was going. We'll, we'll see how this, but we know, we're hopeful this budget is gonna work out better for us than it has when I was the mayor four years ago, when everything had parentheses around it. So, if there's an opportunity to make our nonprofit company, our company, our city, put some money in a fund that will allow us to do some of these acquisitions, I wanted to have that discussion. But that was a figure, somewhere at 500,000 to a million dollars in this two-year cycle.
Right. If I can speak a little, I think $500,000, maybe a little bit more. Right, um, if I can speak a little, I think five hundred thousand dollars may be a little bit more reasonable because, um. As you may recall, we'll try to amortize over the next three years, the, the cost that we incur and to incur. For various projects that we undertook in anticipation of the municipal water system sale.
No, I know. Yeah, I, you know, it's kind of, and I would be okay with that. We've got so many possibilities of land acquisition that we need to, uh. Sell. I mean, we, we still have the bank, we've got the Greek market. And, uh, those are monies that could go into that account when we find a buyer for them. Isn't that right? And that could happen a year from now, or it could happen six months from now, it could happen four years from now.
Well, it may be an evolving thing too. We might sell the water system as well. Or we might find another way to fund those products that were previously funded by the water system. We're going to look into that as well. So.
Right, but I know i- if we have an account already. Which I think it's been established that we can use what Tay has presented. Then there's no need to do any work in that regard. It's just a matter of figuring out. How much would the council like to put aside, if any at all, during this process that we're discussing this year?
Yeah, I think it's fine. I mean, obviously, any, any project, any land acquisition we do is going to require a significant discussion. We'll go to the council. Um, I think the number is probably a good place to start, but, uh. Um, if we do buy something, it's probably going to run more, just to be clear. I mean, we all know that, so. Um, but yeah, I think that's the place to go.
Yeah, for five hundred thousand, I can't get you a half acre in horse country.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But I do think that the properties that we have acquired. Are all, have held their value and increased. And of course, our real score was that one that, uh, the hotel is potentially going to go occupy. The one we're able to settle that out.
Yeah.
That was one of our better moves.
Yeah.
Um, anyway, so at this point, let me ask, I'm going to kind of poll and, uh. We'll go through the council, see what their thoughts are on property acquisition and, uh. See if they have a figure in mind as to how they think we should play it. And I'll start with, uh, Mr. Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, no, I'm, I'm definitely open to that. I, there's, yeah, I think. I think each of us always keep our eyes out there on, 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 you know, property that would be very useful for this community or. Or great buys to then turn it over to, you know, get it, uh, developed and so on. So, uh. Something like that, I think is, is very important that, uh, some kind of set aside, um. I think I kind of senses, sense from Tay, you know, the half a million starting point. Probably might be more appropriate, but for now, but, but I think over time, yeah, that, I mean, that fund's going to have to grow, as what Jeff said. I mean, the land price is here, it's like five hundred thousand is not going to go much, so. Uh, no, I, 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 I would, I'd like to see a green light on that.
All right, I thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Victor Sanchez, have you an opinion on this idea?
I echo those comments. I think it's the right tactic. Um, that's how the council's been able to move and bring progress to the city, so. I, I lean on, uh, um, maybe somewhere in the middle, seven hundred and fifty, if need be.
Okay. I'll be honest with you, I had some, um, the million dollar figure came from our, our colleague, Mr. Dutton, who always shoots for the Skadars, as you know. So, uh, that would be where he would go. Sunny Sanionas, what do you believe on, uh, funding property?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, so this fund is basically just for, um, property acquisition for resale.
Yeah, I don't think we're, that's the theory, you know? Uh, you know, I don't want to buy and hold it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, so that's the purpose. So I, I agree with you that, in, in fact, I, I, I've given more thought about it and, uh. And thank you for starting the conversation about this. Um, I, I was thinking more of a higher amount. I'm using the, uh, the Bank of the West as a starting point. So I, I would suggest that, uh, the goal should be at least one point five million.
Real numbers today.
I know what I'm getting at is at least we can, we can have a target of one point five and then depending on how much money we have, then we can fund it. Whether it's two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever is available, uh, we can, we can put it aside. That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
Instead of tie the specific number in terms of how much we contribute every year, I think let's leave it open. And although the goal is about one point five million, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good, a good thought. I would recommend today, we just approve the concept of it and then between now, the budget resolution, when we adopt that. We'll figure out how much money we actually have and we can make a firmer, uh, uh, recommendation then with, uh. Yeah, and, and I think the five hundred thousand dollar number is a minimum starting place on that, but the one point five is probably more realistic overall, but yeah.
Mayor, can I get some clarification on this?
Yes, go right ahead, Tay.
Five hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, one point five million dollars, are these annual transfers or just one-time transfers?
Let me speak about that, Tay made suggesting, the goal is one fifty. So whatever, whatever we can contribute each year, I'm okay with it, whatever is available.
And we're not going to determine that Tay till we get a little more exact on this budget.
Right. Yeah, I tell you, we need to get comfortable in the numbers and I know you're not. And so you and I are going to have to have some discussions about that, then we'll make a recommendation after the council. You know, we firm it all up.
And the other option is, um. Because we, everybody exercise caution in terms of spending. And we do conservative budgeting. At the end of the year, we have some excess surplus in the general fund. And that could be the transfer source and we can make that recommendation every, say, uh, this is September before we close the books. To transfer general fund surplus into this fund.
No, that'd be, like, what, what'd we have, six hundred thousand the year before?
Yeah. So I think you're just right. I think Tay is right on the mark on that. Um, but let's, before we settle on that, Tay, why don't we figure out what we have? And then, uh, we'll, we'll contribute what we can through this budget process. And then we'll get some direction from the council on how they want to contribute in the future. Does that work?
Yes.
Or we can always raid Gurekki's fund, like when we stole all that money for the, uh, fire museum.
Or yeah, but you know, we could take all that money out of his office rehabilitation as well. Why not?
Yeah, he don't mind.
He doesn't mind at all.
Riding around with trucks with no fenders on it. All right, so have anybody, uh, discussion on, uh, our accounting, uh, finance department? I should, uh, give you all an opportunity to, uh, interact with Mr. Re. Uh, Sunny Sanianas, you have any questions of Tay?
Uh, yes, Mayor. So, um, so stay right, stay stern. So Tay, thank you so much for giving us the additional schedule. Uh, I, I like this, I like this report which, uh, tells us exactly how much we're spending citywide for each line item. And one thing that, uh, caught my attention in analyzing this new listing that you provided us. Is the, uh, the purse contribution. So looking at twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, two point, uh, four seven one million. I'm curious to know, uh, of that amount, how much is the regular annual contribution? How much is for the UAL? And we know that we are also contributing five hundred thousand dollars extra. So if you can provide us that information, that's going to be helpful.
Yes, uh, as, as part of the payroll, biweekly payroll. Annually, we pay about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, thus next fiscal year. And then UAL is about one point one six million dollars. And then additional discretionary payment that the council authorized, we added five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Councilmember Santanias, you're on mute.
Okay, uh, yeah, I want to take this opportunity to again, thanks city council for supporting that proposal. To add a half a million dollars every year because it's going to come a long way. And, uh, we're here for the long haul. Can you imagine, uh, many, many years from now? If we are just paying the regular annual contribution to purse. That's a significant amount that will have been reduced. Uh, as they mentioned, one, almost one point two million dollars is for the unfunded liability. That's a big bite into our budget. So I, I can hardly wait for the day. That we are just paying the regular contribution. So thank you again, Tay, for that, uh, information. And second question, speaking of the, um, the equipment replacement fund. I know that, uh, in the past, it's been, uh, overfunded. Is it, um, is it, um. Appropriate to sound the alarm now? Are we, are we getting to a low now at this point? Because I'm looking at the trend. Uh, one point two million in seventeen, eighteen, and then one point three in eighteen, nine, eighteen, nineteen. And then this year, almost one point two. And, and this year is going to be six, six hundred sixty-nine thousand. Next year, five hundred fifty-five, and then the year after that, four fifty-two. It's going down. Uh, is, is it the right, is it the right thing to do or what, what's the, uh, what's the soft spot, so to speak? For that fund to make sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible?
Actually, the numbers you talked about is, uh, is the bottom line net assets, which includes all the. Six assets that we purchased. The available cash will be about next year, hundred fifty-eight thousand, the year after one hundred ninety-one thousand. I think that, I mean, personal preference, there's no right answer or wrong answer. Personal preference would be building it up to. About five hundred thousand to one million dollars in the front, just in case, um, there's some nice projects that we want to undertake.
Uh, no, I'm just talking about the equipment replacement.
Yes.
Project.
Equipment replacement, yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's a fund that I was talking about.
Okay, because what you do is you, you, if I remember correctly, if I'm, if I remember correctly, uh, you, you charge its department every year. Based on the normal cycle. And then when they purchase, they, I mean, they, they, they basically buy the equipment from that fund, is that right?
Right, the fund finances the purchase and then amortizes the costs over five years and charges the purchasing department. Purchasing department, the user fees.
So are, are you comfortable with that level of funding at this point, uh, projecting the next two years?
Uh, next two years, we're fine. Um, we can purchase what we want and then we'll have about a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. In cash at the end of the second year.
Okay, so at this point, it, it is sufficient for the next two years and beyond, a little bit beyond.
Right.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sanianas. So, uh, Mr. Hamada, will you have any questions of Tay and finance?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I always start my question usually with Tay, whenever I see him is, is there money in the bank? And so he always says yes, so I'm always happy. But, uh, again, I, I wanted to commend, uh, Tay and his team for, you know, bringing forth a, a number of those, uh, you know, financing. Uh, you know, items that we've seen, so we've seen some savings, good savings, uh, over, over the long run, so. Uh, you, you know, the obvious question, Tay, is, is there anything more out there like that, that, that you're, that you plan to bring to us? And save some more bucks?
I think we're all done with city debt.
With Mr. Hamada, we're never done, we're always.
When do we get done?
No, yeah, we always find some kind of scheme to work on.
Well, good, uh, and, um, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm glad, uh, there was some discussion about purse and, and. You know, that I, I participate on the league, uh, uh, committee for, you know, governance, uh, transparency and, uh, you know, labor relations. And I mentioned, I mentioned, uh, our, you know, five hundred grand additional and. There's a good number of cities that are very envy of us, look at envy, envious of us. And they, and they were amazed that, that. Oh, yes, yeah.
The prudent thing to do, you, you're hedging against the market failure or market.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And it still allows us to meet the threshold, take advantage of, of the bonds out there and the pensions. So I think we're one of the few cities.
Oh, yeah.
About it, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and, and that's what they're, you know, trying, you know, hard to believe is. Is how they can figure it out, because some of them haven't even tried starting to figure it out, so. So I know, I, at this point, I know, I, you know, Tay's budget, uh, I'm glad he's, uh, at full staff. And everything's rolling there and, uh, so, um, uh, again, I want to thank, uh. Uh, Tay, uh, again, Tay and his team for all the great work and, uh, I, I think, yes, as, as was mentioned. We've been in, in a good place and I think, I think with some of the added fund, you know, funds that are going to coming forth, I think. We're going to be in a much better place, so. All right, I'll leave it at that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Sanchez, questions of Tay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, just, uh, one. Uh, first off, a compliment, uh, same as, uh. Uh, the other council members, thank you, Tay, for all the, uh, reports you've been sending over this week and just for being, uh, timely and all that. Um, did, just want to ask a question, um. Mr. Stewart made a comment that you're not sure with the numbers or how confident you are yet. Is, is, can you elaborate a little bit on that? What's kind of, what has you in that position?
No, it's a, it's a good thing. I'm not talking about a negative thing. What I'm talking about is, I believe there's in the, in the bailout, the federal bailout that's coming to the city. I believe there's actually room to offset some of the costs that are borne by the water system that we assign to the water system now. And depending on how the guidelines look, I think we can actually freeze some of that money up and that's what, that's what we're going to look hard into doing. So.
The numbers yet.
Yeah, it's just, there's nothing bad. There's no, there's no bad toss here. It's just Tay, Tay is being very conservative and is correctly looking to get. Uh, amortize that cost over three years so we can recover that cost. In the event we cancel the water system, although. You know, we're not dead yet with the PUC and, uh, and, and the water system. We may actually sell that system yet, um. I wouldn't, you know, I'm not, I'm not jumping through the roof with our chances here, but I think we have a thirty, forty percent chance to sell that thing at cost. At the amount that we wanted on that, so, which is a heck of a lot better than it was six months ago, mainly because of a couple of the things that have occurred. With the ALJ and the PUC, uh, which I've kept apprised of in the weeklies, but. You know, we have a condition-based assessment of the system coming due June thirtieth. Uh, the ALJ is going to rule to reopen the testimony. We're have to go back up there and sing for our supper again. But I don't think this thing's dead yet. And I think that, you know, uh, we may find a way forward, so. If not, that's fine, we'll make it one way or the other, but if that happens, things are a lot easier. So. There's no bad news and there actually may be some good news, I guess, to summarize it.
All right, thank you, Jeff, for that explanation. Um, that was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't have any further questions for Tay, just good job for Tay and the team. For all the work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Tay, how many years have you worked for our city now?
I forgot.
Yeah, you, yeah, that's the number you're going to forget.
It's only twenty-seven years.
Twenty-seven years.
I can't, I can't remember exactly.
All right, well, that's close enough. So my question is, in all the years you worked for the city. Have we ever been in a better financial situation than we are today?
This is the best, so I can't believe how good we are financially. Thank you very much for. Being behind, uh, Major Ann. That was, uh, truly a lifesaver for us.
No, it, uh, worked out well. Um, I attribute that to, uh, our staff and, uh. The fact that our city is doing well, people trust our council. And they said, uh, if you guys believe that you need a little more money on the sales tax, we'll support you to, what was it, sixty-eight percent approval? So that worked out well. That's all I have for you. So I think we've done all the departments now, except we left for Elizabeth and planning as the last one. Elizabeth, are you on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thanks for hanging with us.
No worries. So, um, I, one of the main things that I heard at the last budget meeting was, uh, more enforcement related to street vendors. And so, um, I had asked Tay to see if we can increase the overtime budget for the code enforcement officers. By about four thousand dollars. Um, I did also have a conversation with the public safety director. To potentially have the CSOs act as backup to the code enforcement on weekends that were unable to cover. And so, um, we think both through an increased overtime for the. Code enforcement officers and potentially with the CSOs helping back up the code enforcement officers, we can address that specific situation. helping back up the coenforcement officers, we can address that specific situation. And with the increased budget, it would also help us with more targeted enforcement. So, you know, for example, we also have yard sales being a huge issue, or at least a number of complaints coming through related to yard sales. So that overtime budget can help us address that as well. Really, that's all I had from the last budget meeting, unless there are any questions that you have.
Elizabeth, I believe what you just said will really help if we can pull that off and kind of retrain those vendors. It may not have to be something that we do indefinitely, but once they know that we're patrolling on the weekends, they probably won't be as aggressive as they have been. So I thank you for looking into that and finding a solution that sounds rather economical, but it will allow for our city streets to be a lot better looking on the weekends. So, Mr. Sanzinez, please, any questions you have of Elizabeth?
No, Mayor, Ms. Corpus addressed my, my, my only concern from, from last Monday's meeting, which is the code enforcement for street vendors, so thank you.
All right. Victor Sanchez, questions of Ms. Corpus?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hamada, questions of Ms. Corpus?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beth, again, you know, great job on, on, you know, tackling Rena here, so, you know, hopefully we'll be looking forward to some good, good news once we start tidying up all the discussion and, and the element. I know, I think maybe it's more so from the public that's brought this up, but vacant storefronts. And right now, our, our code still hasn't addressed that yet.
Our code does address vacant storefronts, it does. I will say that it does require the vacant storefronts to be properly maintained and that they register with the city. To piggyback off of one of our previous study sessions regarding small scale manufacturing, one of the recommendations from the consultant was to potentially redo or relook at that ordinance to potentially add a more substantial fine for those vacant storefronts. And so that is one of the items that was recommended from the consultant, and we will be looking more closely to see how we can best address that and to see what fines we could.
All right.
We can include.
All right, so yeah, so you'll be looking at fees and fines for that. All right, good. Oh, we were, we were talking earlier about funding the master park plan, and we have a general plan update fee. And what's, what's, what's collected right now? What's the current collection rate?
I believe it is twelve percent of every building permit that's issued that goes to the general plan and zoning updating or funding.
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent.
All right, oh, that's a great number, I think. Unless, you know, you, you can figure out the, tap more, but obviously that, you know. Then on the other side, it, it starts increasing the potential screaming. So now that fee, once it's collected and it's, and it's put in a fund, and the, the scope on, on what it could pay for. Is it just general plan update, or is it anything else that, that could be, you know, related to it? Be it like your next zoning code update or some kind of special study, like a master plant, master park plan? Or something else that could be tied to the general plan?
Councilmember Hamada, I'll have to look more closely at the resolution that adopted the general plan fee. The general plan update fee is, is applicable to all of the elements of the general plan, so it's not just housing. It could be used for open space updates, public safety updates, noise updates. So I will say that it does cover all seven elements. I don't know if it specifically covers studies, if you're not planning to update that specific element, that I'm not one hundred percent certain of.
Check into it, please.
Sure.
In the budget, it, it shows the money, you're spending money on GIS, the upgrades. And there's, there's a grant, I believe, so. And again, grants are, are huge when, when we can get it. So, and typically in the planning realm now, I've seen more and more, you know, grants out there. So again, I know, I know you, you may have a potential staffing issue at times because, because of the caseload and, and, but have we tapped the maximum you think we can get for GIS? Because that's, I think you've been, you've been trying to update that for, 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 for a bit.
Yes.
When do you think we're going to get to a point where we're, we're, we're good with the program we have? I know it's, I mean, tech is, is a constant watch. So are, are we looking at the very near future where we're, where we're at our, sort of our first goal?
Yes, so we did obtain LEAP funding from the state.
Yeah.
The purpose of the funding was to help accelerate housing, that's really the purpose of the funding.
Yeah.
But it also covers, it does also cover software. So we were able to get approval for the LEAP because we showed that with updated aerials and updated maps, you know, developers and the public can more easily check on their zoning, in which case that ultimately impacts the production of housing. It helps speed that up. So we were able to get, I believe it's about forty five thousand in the overall three hundred thousand grant from LEAP money to upgrade our gen, or sorry, to upgrade our GIS system. So that's, you'll probably see an update, I would say twenty, the end of twenty twenty one, beginning of twenty twenty two. Because part of that update also involves when we need to implement the housing element. We'll need to do a series of zone changes or general plan amendments, and so we will also need to update those zoning maps at that time, too. So that is my anticipated date is fiscal year twenty twenty one.
All right. I'm going to be, you know, relaying you some information that I received from SCAG. The other day, I sat in on their virtual open house. So there was, there was a few tables that I got put at, and one was GIS. And the staffer over there definitely seemed to know what he was doing and talking about. So the way he's, the way he was throwing it out there was, there could be some more money from SCAG to, to help out on some of that stuff, so. All right. Trying to remember the, I think I got to that, that was the, like. All right. All right, right now, I think I, I may have lost the third one on my notes here, so I will leave it at that, Beth. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. So I think we've pretty well, I haven't forgotten any of our department heads, that was all of them, isn't it? All right, haven't heard anybody say you forgot my department. So this would conclude our council study session number two. I don't see any reason to have any other of these sessions, I think we pretty well ferreted out everything we wanted to do. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Sanzinez?
Absolutely, Mayor, yes, I think, I think we did well. And I want to take this opportunity to thank staff for preparing a very comprehensive budget and their presentation. It was well done, everything was clear. We have some minor questions, but I think we know exactly what we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, questions, comments, or do you feel like we've done a, completed our work here?
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, I mean, Mr. Mayor, we're, I agree, I echo those comments. I think staff did, for this being my first time around, I think it was very clear, very informative, so just a learning process for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Hamada, questions, comments, or do you feel like we've completed our work here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I definitely commend staff for, for their work and definitely a budget time is always a stress time, but like I, like people imagined, we're, we're, right now, we're, we're in a good place here, and I think it's going to get better. And I think we've done a lot of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and, and yeah, we've, we've, we've asked for some other opportunities. And it looks like staff's going to be doing some, some more study work, so that's good. And, but no, I think we're ready to, to move forward. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I feel the same way. I'm so grateful to staff for the good work they've put together for us. It's easy to understand, easy to read, and you've been so transparent on responding to our questions for the last two meetings. I'll be honest with you, it made it a little easier on me when I only had four colleagues, or three colleagues and myself. With, I would have fifth one, Mr. Dutton, I would appreciate his input, but it actually went a little quicker that way because of the fact we didn't have any questions from him. So Madam City Clerk, as I look at our budget calendar, we have, May seventeen is the last time to submit proposed project program requests, and we still have that option. So any council member that feels as though we've left something out, you remembered something, that can still be presented up until May seventeen of, of this month. Our actual vote on the proposed budget will be held five twenty four at our regular council meeting. And that hour is from two to five on that date, and then we're going to adopt the budget at our regular council meeting in June fourteen, two thousand twenty one. Would you agree that is the program that we've put forward, Myra?
Yes, that sounds correct, according to the calendar that the Director of Finance provided. That meeting to vote on the proposed changes is a special meeting before the regular meeting that same day.
So if we do not receive any changes, we can omit that meeting? Or is there other?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there, there's at least two reportables on that meeting, so I think we'll have it.
All right. I didn't know if that was just a certain, it legally had to be put forward.
No, there were two proposals that came up during today's discussion that I think we're going to follow up on. One is the request, we need to follow up on the parks study, conference of car study. And the second item is the amount of money that we're going to be comfortable with. Hopefully, we can come up with enough information to make that recommendation by the seventeenth, but we'll discuss at least those two items. Anything else that may come up between now and then?
Do you have any other comments, Mr. City Manager, before we adjourn in this meeting?
Nope, I just want to thank you for your time and attention on this issue. And as always, you folks have done a great job on, on the budget, asking the tough questions. And I hope we responded adequately, and we will continue to do so soon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. What is our, I'm adjourning this meeting, what is the next date, Myra, that we're going to adjourn to?
This meeting just simply needs to be adjourned.
All right, so there's no future date, so it is for, Mr. Stewart had something?
Well, last item, I mean, we, of course, just a quick reminder, we do have the regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, so May the tenth.
Right, the regular meeting on May the tenth, is that, that a five thirty closed session deal?
Correct, yeah, I'll start that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of clarification in terms of the budget changes. How will staff handle those changes that we kind of informally voted in the process? For example, it's the, the additional five thousand dollars on the speed, the speed reader, the four thousand dollars for code enforcement, those kind of things? How would this be handled?
I believe that we had, we added those in, Tay, correct?
Yes, we'll incorporate those items for council's adoption on June fourteenth as part of the total budget.
I see, we, it's right now, at the moment, we have two outstanding questions on, I think we have general consensus on, on setting aside funds for these two specific products. It's just the amount of, that we need to report back to when we get more information.
Just, just for clarity for us, it's going to be easier to approve the budget. Can, Tay, can you make a list of those changes separately?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
There's only three or four of them that I can think of, but that way, we can be assured that nobody forgot them.
That's right. And, and, and the council, they may have more ideas between now and then as well, Mr. Dutton has some ideas as well, that he wants to.
No, I, I expect that, but as long as we got, we heard his proposal about putting money aside for property acquisition. I think we dealt with his concern there, that was one of the things that was high on his list.
Right.
All right, so it's four oh five, and it's May sixth, we're going to adjourn the meeting. See you next week.